So let's stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, united, in its soul, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you again for coming out on another brisk Minnesota evening. Looking for a approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, tonight's agenda is approved. We move into item number four on your agenda, which is recognition of student, staff, and public. This evening we have a friend. The school district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners and community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our Friends of Education. I'd like to invite Eric Melby, Executive Director of Student Services, to come forward, as he has done already, and introduce our friend for this evening.
Thank you Chair Bergstrom, members of the Board, Superintendent Fujitaki, and the public. I am here tonight to introduce a new friend for our Friend Board, and that is the organization Intermediate School District 917. And I'll introduce Dr. John Christensen, who's their superintendent, in a second here. But I just wanted to let everybody know that four years ago, that's when I came to Bloomington, the district had made a decision to become a new member of Intermediate 917. And for a lot of reasons that didn't come to fruition, a change like that could be challenging for families, for staff. It's change, it's a new partner, there's inherent things that could go, you know, wrong with that. And I have to say, I've rarely witnessed a smoother transition to an organization like that than when I witnessed when I came here. And I credit our staff and families and the staff from 917 that worked so hard to make that transition so smooth. Over the past four years, partnerships, communication, great programming for students have gone very well with Intermediate 917. And I'm always sort of amazed that every time I send an email to Dr. Christensen or some of my other colleagues over there, make a phone call, they answer and call me back because I often have things I'm asking 917 to do for the students and families of Bloomington. And they're always open to creative partnerships, they're always open to new ideas, and just a fantastic partner. So the work that Intermediate 917 does for the families in Bloomington, as well as the families of their other member districts, is outstanding. High-quality programming, couldn't be more pleased with the partnership. So with that, I'm going to introduce you to the superintendent from Intermediate 917, Dr. John Christensen, great guy to work with. Luckily, he's here with us now because he spent a lot of time in South Dakota and Nebraska, I'm not sure why, but now he's in Minnesota. So we're really happy to have him as a partner. And Dr. Christensen, I'll let you say a few words.
Thanks, Eric. I just would like to echo a couple of things. First of all, anytime you make a transition from being a longtime member of one organization to another organization, you expect a few questions, you expect a few things to come up, you expect a few transition issues to come along. And actually, I agree, it's gone very smoothly with the families and with the students and with the work that we do. We're probably most noted for our special education program, which is why Eric is probably introducing us tonight. We provide services for low-incidence disabled students, and we've joined in some good partnerships, and we're looking at some more to come here and also come into the district and provide some opportunities within district too, not just doing it off-campus or off-site. One that's not probably as well-known, and Deb is here tonight with some students, is our career and tech programming too. And we try to specialize in the kinds of career and tech program that it's just not dup-- you just can't duplicate on a high school campus. So as an example, we have a fundamental chef program with a full commercial kitchen, which is a byproduct of being on the Dakota County Technical Campus. We have heavy-duty truck opportunities, auto maintenance. We have a Cisco program, a career gaming and networking and so forth, which we try to specialize in things that are available there on the campus for us, for the students at Kennedy and Jefferson. So we really appreciate the partnership. I'm-- it's great to be recognized as a friend. I kind of consider us old friends, we've been doing this for a little bit, but I do appreciate the honor, and we do appreciate working with the district and Superintendent Fujitaki, Eric, and Chris, and other people in the district. They've all been very, very good to work with, and we're always looking for new and creative and innovative things to do, and I appreciate the out-of-the-box thinking that I get from my staff here at Bloomington on a regular basis. So thank you very much, I appreciate it, and have a good meeting.
All right, on behalf of the school board, we thank our friends for their generous support of education, our students, staff, families, and the community of Bloomington. And your logo will be placed on our Friends Wall in the rear of our meeting room. Okay. Next up here is a Career and Technical Education Proclamation. So I have this--
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Be it resolved that the School District of Independent School District Number 271 approves the attached proclamation proclaiming February 2014 as Career and Technical Education Month in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I have this fancy proclamation that I'm going to read for Debbie, so bear with me. Career and Technical Education Month proclamation, whereas February 2014 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education and Governor Mark Dayton, and whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system, and whereas career and technical education provides college and career readiness and is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce, which fosters productivity in business, industry, and contributes to America's leadership in the international marketplace, and whereas career and technical education gives students experience in practical, meaningful applications and technical preparation and provides the integration of technical and academic content, thus improving the quality of their education and affords students leadership opportunities in their schools and their communities, and whereas career and technical education offers individuals opportunities to learn new skills validated by technical skill assessments, which provide them with expanded career choices, and whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts between career and technical educators with post-secondary institutions and businesses and industry partners stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now therefore, we members of the Bloomington Board of Education proclaim in the Bloomington Public Schools that February 2014 will be observed as Career and Technical Education Month.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, and Board members, this is always an honor to have Career Technical Education be honored every February. Last year, we had over 1,500 students at Jefferson and Kennedy enrolled in Career Technical Education Program areas. Just to remind you, that includes business and marketing education, family and consumer sciences, technology education, work-based learning programs, and career counseling programs. So it's wonderful to represent all of them and have you recognize those students also. Career and technical education provides many of our students with opportunities to start earning early college credit while they're still in high school, either through articulated credit or actual transcripted credit, as they do earn in our engineering programs at the high school. So it's a wonderful transition where they really put their academics to work and also start learning a lot of technical skills at the same time. In coordination with our friend from Dr. Christensen here tonight in Intermediate District 917, I thought it might be fun to meet a student from Jefferson and Kennedy that attend our schools, and then also leave for part of their day to attend programming at the 917 site located at Dakota County Technical College. So I will let the students introduce themselves tonight, talk about what program they're in. One of our students here tonight, Brandy, was recognized as a distinguished student last week, so she can tell you a little bit about what that means.
Hi, I'm Brandy. So I'm a senior at Jefferson, and I go to Dakota for fundamental chef training. And what we do there is we like learn all the basic training for like knives and like cutting and all the stuff you would learn in a restaurant, and like you just do whatever you want and like cook food and eat it. I was awarded Student of Distinction Award for being like one of the students that gets their job done, doesn't have to be asked twice, and like always helpful. I really like going there because I want to be a chef when I get older, and it kind of helps me work towards being a chef because it gives me all the skills I need to learn for further use in the future.
Hi, I'm Kenny. I'm a senior at Kennedy High School. I attend video game design and intro to 3D modeling. Yeah, so we learn the basics in video game design, basics in 3D modeling using a free software, Blender, it's pretty good. It helps me because I'd like to develop software such as video games or video applications. Possibly modeling wouldn't be my thing, but I like to program. So, yeah.
Can I just ask, so is learning how to make video games at school like the best thing ever? Or is it just--
It's better than math.
Just curious.
I hope we don't have any math teachers in here.
I'd like to thank those students for being here tonight, though, to help you understand a little bit about those. And they're supported by their parents, and so they're also here tonight, and it's wonderful to have them as part of their students' learning here tonight and then in their academic careers. So thank you for being here tonight, too. Thanks.
Before you go away, Debbie, I have-- Just a quick thanks to moms and dads for doing what you do for your sons and daughters. We appreciate that. Okay, now we're moving on to public recognition. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to address the school board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Part of what we do at the school board meetings is government classes. Do we have any seniors from any of our, either of our two high schools that are here attending for class credit? All right. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to ask if you come up to the podium, just tell us what your name is, what your teacher's name is, and what school you go to. So you want to give credit to your school. So come on up, tell us who you are.
Hello, I'm Ryan Carew. I have Ms. Abby as a teacher, and I go to Jefferson High School.
Great, thanks, Brian.
Hi, I'm Sabrina Majid, and I go to Jefferson High School, and my government teacher is Mr. Stortling.
All right. So the requirements, I believe, are they're going to ask you to stay for at least an hour. And you can have an agenda, which is on the back counter by the coffee machine, can have that signed by any one of the staff that's off here. I'll just read a little blurb for those that are paying attention at home that tells what we're doing with our students. A requirement of the 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort, things they may attend are city councils, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings. Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political process and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So thank you guys again for coming, didn't mean to put you on the spot, but now your teacher's name is on the record. Okay, now we move to part A. We're looking to-- part A is a consent agenda, this is just part of the agenda that we're doing, everyday business. We look for a motion to approve.
I have a question before we proceed. That part A, items D and E, in the resolution that we have-- What's that? Yeah, A. In the resolution that we have for Bloomington Regional Early Childhood Parent Advisory Council, I noticed that we have the name for the board representative. I was wondering if we need to include the name of the board representative for District Diversity Advisory Committee and Community Council? Do we need to do that, or is that not necessary?
Yeah, I think we can include that.
Just for information purposes?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we're going to add the name of the board representative for the District Advisory Council. Is that--
Yeah, District Advisory and CCC.
Okay. All right, any other questions on part A? All right, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
As amended, second.
Okay. Moved as amended and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We can move on to part B, which is Roman Nummer-- number six, for those of you that aren't keeping track at home. High school graduation fees, we have Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox.
Thank you, Chairman Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board. Tonight you have in front of you a resolution to approve the 2014 graduation fee. The fee's been set at $60, that's an increase of $5 from last year, and that increase is a direct result of our need to have moved the venue for this spring's ceremony, and administration is recommending approval.
All right, we are a little backwards in our formality here, but why don't we have somebody read that resolution?
I'll read the motion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the graduation fee of $60 per student for Kennedy and Jefferson High School for the 2013-2014 school year.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Anyone have any questions?
Is there--
Chair Bergstrom. Yes.
For students that maybe have a hard time affording that, do we offer--
We do. Yep.
Yes. Do you have any idea, because this doesn't include the price for cap and gown? Do you have any, or diplomas? Do you have any idea how much that costs?
Not in front of me, we certainly can get that and provide that for the board.
It's more of a curiosity than anything.
Sure, yep.
It's been a while since I graduated, so I have no idea how much they cost nowadays.
All right. Any other questions before we move to vote? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lennox. Next thing up is the World's Best Workforce Plan Development, and Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox will present that. Do we have a motion? Director Oliva.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School Districts 271 directs administration to develop a plan that meets all legislative requirements of the World's Best Workforce and bring the plan back to the school board for approval in the fall of 2014.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded.
Thank you, Chair Bergstrom and Superintendent, members of the board. Actually, this resolution for the World's Best Workforce and the three that follow are all work that our district is doing to align our district strategic plan with the legislative expectations for the World's Best Workforce and the Achievement and Integration Plan. Detailed information was provided to the school board at the last meeting, and these resolutions are simply formalizing the school board's directive to administration to move forward and complete that necessary work. So administration is recommending approval of all four of those resolutions.
Okay, we have any conversation regarding this? Okay, we move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox is going to stay right where he is. Next thing up is the Pathways to Graduation: World's Best Workforce Plan Alignment. Do we have a motion?
Over here.
Yes, Director Skigoff.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School Districts 271 directs administration to re-author the district pathways to graduation materials to align with the World's Best Workforce Plan and the Achievement and Integration Plan. Administration will bring back the new pathways material for the school board to review in the fall of 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Assistant said?
Again, these recommendations or resolutions are simply directing administration to do the work necessary.
Yes, Director Oliva.
Chair Bergstrom, just one question, fall of 2014 is kind of a big area, you know, if we get it in December 20th, right before break. Are we anticipating early, like maybe late September?
We were targeting the October, as we come back, to make sure that we're announcing, if you recall, our conversation about the old annual report, that was in October 1st type of thing. So as we come back with announcing and talking about World's Best Workforce, obviously, we want to make sure our pathways, plans are all aligned to that. In addition, anticipating a question for the next one, next resolution of Achievement and Integration, remember, we have to have one meeting for both. So as we have that meeting, they'll all fall into place in the fall.
Okay.
Yep.
Just for point of clarification, it would be our first regularly scheduled meeting in October, not the first of October.
Right, and so as we come back, correct, to provide you that information, we'd hold that public meeting as well.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we move to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we are looking for Achievement and Integration Plan Development, and Eric Melby will be presenting. Do we have a motion for this? Who would like to read it? Yes.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School Districts 271 directs administration to develop new success measures that align with the World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration legislation. The new success measures should be brought back to the school board for review in the fall of 2014.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Oh, we've got a threesome coming up here.
Did we jump ahead? Did I read the wrong one? I'm sorry. It was the wrong one.
No, okay.
Achievement and Integration.
We need to go back.
Need to go back to, we're going to get our ducks in a row here, so just hang on.
Do we have to go back and read that one now?
Do you want this one?
Is it the--
I think I have. Is it number 14 here on our document, right? So be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School Districts 271 directs administration to develop a plan that meets all requirements of the Achievement and Integration legislation and bring the plan back to the school board for approval on March 24th, 2014.
Second.
All right, there we go. That's a little more in line with what we have on the agenda. That's okay?
That's okay. Dr. Heistad can come up here and help out, too. It's basically the same as the last two resolutions from the board. We're working on an Achievement and Integration Plan. As we speak, there's meetings being set up, and some have already happened. Just moving forward with it.
Okay. All right, any comment, any questions? All right, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Now we can move to Success Measures Update, which is Dr. Heistad up here.
Resolution has been read already, and this is an opportunity for us to align the success measures with the work that's been done on the pathways to graduation, also looking at the essential elements of the World's Best Workforce at the same time. And this would be simply to update those measures, in some cases maybe replace, in other cases add-on, and in some cases just modify the existing success measures.
Okay. Any board members with any questions? Yes, Director Bennett.
Is there going to be much change required due to new legislation and aligning this World's Best Workforce?
Well, some of the things have happened already, like the MCA tests have been scheduled to sunset, we'll have a new state test coming up. We do have some reporting required for the integration that is a slightly different format for reporting progress on state tests. And then we have the work that was done last year to align the NWA with the outcomes for the ACT, Explore, and Plan Tests. So those things, we've talked to the board already, but we haven't actually changed the success measures. The current success measures are those that have been used prior to the work on pathways to graduation, so this would be updating. Not a lot of major changes, but some recommendations.
Any other questions? Yes, Director Oliva.
When we do the success measures, and even going back to the previous resolution we were talking about, the integration, all that sort of thing, one of the questions that keeps popping in my mind is, are we going to make sure that we have success measures that we can actually take action on? That are actionable? You know what I mean? Because I know a lot of times, the way that things are presented are, we slice kids into groups based on cultural, ethnic, or socioeconomic, but that's not necessarily something we can change, you know? We can't say, well, if our African-American students are performing well, we can't change that, or we can't change who they are, but we have to make sure that we're, figure out why and what the root causes are, what the sources are, or what barriers they might have. And those same barriers will affect all of the different groups, right? So I just want to throw that out there to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page, and that's sort of what we're looking at when we do these.
Yeah, Director Oliva, that's precisely what we're going to be doing with the pathways to graduation, is to not just report out the gaps, but to find out which of our support mechanisms are producing changes in those gaps, what's causing accelerated performance, what might be mitigating progress. And so we'll definitely want to tie those to the action plans associated with the pathways. So all of the learning supports and RTI, those kinds of things, we want to make sure that those efforts are actually resulting in increased student performance.
Any further comments, questions? All right, we move to vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Gentlemen. The next thing up on our Part B agenda is a consultant presentation from TeamWorks International. And Christine, please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Christine Robleski?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate you offering TeamWorks the opportunity to explain a little bit about ourselves and also about what we've been asked to do in terms of a retreat with the Board of Education. So I'm just going to give you, again, a little bit of background about TeamWorks first. Again, I'm Christine Robleski. I'm a senior consultant with TeamWorks International. I joined about a year ago. TeamWorks has been in operation for more than 18 years now. Our client base includes education, primarily school districts in Minnesota, but also across the country. We also include nonprofit organizations, religious organizations, and some for-profit organizations as well. You'll see the slide, I think you have it here in front of you, and for the audience, it's up top here. Our TeamWorks approach is really a partnership-based approach. It's about developing trust and honoring clients, and also honoring the stakeholders and the staff and those people who helped design, in this case, your strategic plan. I can see it behind you, and updating that plan. So that's a part of our approach to our work. So we customize our services to the organization that we're serving, but we use a set of tools that we found to be effective in helping organizations reach their goals and also implement their goals, which, as you know, you can develop a plan, but if it sits there on the shelf, it's not going to help you. So we have made a conscious choice to work with the organizations that we work with, including education, and we have been lucky enough to learn from, in this case, districts helping other districts. And Superintendent Christensen is actually one of the school districts that we're working with as well. So it was nice to see a friend of TeamWorks here as well. Up here, you'll see, sorry for the small type, some of our core strategies. We talk about our vision delivery services. That's typically what you would see as strategic planning, goal setting, strategic directions, and also implementing those directions. And so what we do is we really focus on the governance and the management roles, and then what we talk about is consultative roles, not consultants like we are, but consulting with your stakeholders in developing and improving plans that you may have over the course of the organization's lifecycle. In this case, it would be with your strategic planning process, and how does the board work with management? How does the board work with your other stakeholders? And how do you do that effectively? Part of the way that we do that, I'm going to drop down, is to what we call our Framework Series, and I brought a little, our educational leadership system is one of the ways that we do that. We've used it effectively with a number of school districts in particular, where we use a series of frameworks to really help guide you through actions, activities, understanding with the different stakeholders you have, with you as a board working effectively with management. What are your roles? How do you work effectively in partnership so that the roles, the goals, the expectations are clear, and you have a way to talk to each other about it that is not about personality or style, but is really about the goals and how you work effectively together? And so that's what our Framework Series does. We also have partnership leadership services that we provide. That includes coaching and team building and development for administrative teams as well as for boards of education. And then we also offer insight research services. That includes everything from synthesizing external and internal data, so you have a real clear report that highlights, for example, census data with school enrollment and achievement data, and you have a better picture of what's happening, not just in the district, but across your community. Sometimes we call that market research as well, and we've used that as you go through enrollment shifts, as other districts have done that. So those are some of our strategies. In terms of what you've asked TeamWorks to do for you, Dennis Cheesebrow, who is our president of TeamWorks International, would be the one that would deliver and facilitate a session with you. I believe it's in a week or two from now, if it were to take place with TeamWorks. And what we would do is really an overview of strategic planning and what you were just talking about right now, which is World's Best Workforce and Integration Planning. It would be real-time governance work about how you as a board would work with management in making sure that the district is moving forward with your strategic directions, your strategic plan, aligning that with World's Best Workforce and also with the new requirements of the Integration Plan that the state. It has been quite a shift for many school districts. And so Bloomington is one of the districts that we would hope to be working with, as well as some of our other clients that we've been able to learn from and support in aligning strategic planning, integration planning, and World's Best Workforce. The other piece of what Dennis would do for you is review the goals for the Board of Education, and then also the goals in what we would call planning, you know, three-year operational plans with the Office of the Superintendent. Again, it would be an introduction. You're not going to be able to do that in a three-hour time period, but it would be talking about what those goals look like and how do you go about aligning your goals with the management's goals. And then, of course, you'll need to talk about what do you need to do to deliver on achieving those goals for the school district. From our perspective, again, it's going to take teamwork. It would take a partnership-based approach, and it would be really looking at performance as Dave Heistad was just explaining here. It's, you know, aligning your performance expectations also with your implementation expectations and your capacity to really achieve your goals. And we usually wrap things up at TeamWorks with any of our sessions with next steps. In this case, it would be first steps because you're a new board, and then key messages because you send ripples throughout your organization every time you complete any kind of retreat, and it's good to walk away with a clear understanding of what you've learned from each other and from any session that you have with us. I've included a couple of extra slides because I understand you're a new board, some of you I have seen before, and so I apologize for any repeat of some of the information that I'm presenting. But one of the pieces that we do with our excellence in government, excuse me, governance portion of our educational leadership system is really talk about what we consider the five main components of excellence and governance for public school districts in particular. And of course, there's district policy, there's operational oversight, board governance, which is how you create policies to work with each other, your relationship with the superintendent, and also how you work with your stakeholders and with the public, what you would like that to look like, and, you know, what are the roles and responsibilities you have and what you would like to see in terms of your engagement with them, so that it works for you and it works for management in the district and, of course, the students and the staff that support them. You had mentioned a little bit about the World's Best Workforce. Shortly after MDE sent out information about World's Best Workforce last fall, we started receiving a number of phone calls from clients saying, what is it? How can we align it with our strategic plan? We've helped several districts with their own strategic plan. So we created a tip sheet and sent that out to all of our clients. It's a little hard to see on the screen, but we worked and talked with some of the folks at MDE, talked with some other clients about what their common questions were, and sent this out, and actually were requested to send it to some other organizations as well because we felt it clarified a little bit more concisely the information that was being sent out and being asked of our clients. So I just wanted you to be able to see that that seemed to have been appreciated by many of our clients. And I'm not going to talk too much longer, but again, part of our educational leadership system is really about the roles, the specific roles that you have of excellence and governance, you as the board, the management role, that is, the superintendent and the cabinet, and then your principals kind of verge in and out of that role of management. And then, of course, there's kind of a line where the public is connected with the Board of Education, and then you'll see that your schools and programs are connected to the administrators, and your parents are primarily connected to your schools and programs. And so what we do is really talk about clarity among those roles. When we talk about consultation, as I mentioned earlier, it's really about consulting with the public and your families and with your staff in a way that's going to be effective toward you achieving your district goals. And so part of our system is really how do you do that effectively, understanding where you are as an organization. I do have a couple more slides that introduce some frameworks, but I'm going to leave you with this right now and see if you have any questions for me.
All right. Thank you very much for coming this evening. I'll open it up for any questions we have.
Do we have a dollar amount of what this is going to cost?
Yes. I believe that we have sent an estimate to you. I believe it's about $935, $975, excuse me.
Is there any extras to that, or is that pretty much what we?
I believe it also covers the cost of any educational leadership system booklets that you may need.
It's an all-inclusive fee. Okay.
Does that also include mileage, travel, time, that type of thing, in that fee?
As Superintendent Fujitaki said, for that retreat, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Director Corman.
Could you please go to the previous slide?
This one.
Yeah. It just catches my attention, the part about the advisory committee and the members that need to be part of it, the two-thirds that we have talked about before that needed to be, well, strongly recommended, it's people from our community and parents. So in this retreat, are we going to be talking about this in detail? I'm just wondering because of what is presented in the agenda, I'm wondering if we're going to have enough time to really address this deeply, as this is something that seems to be very much put in the hands of the board?
As you stated, Director Corman, correct? Three hours is not going to be enough to go into detail on World's Best Workforce. What we would talk about is the overarching requirements of World's Best Workforce and how that aligns with your roles and goals as a board, and it would be an introduction into the conversation about how you as a board take the legislation that's required with World's Best Workforce and Integration and use that as real-time learning for how you conduct excellence and governance. So something like a detailed question around the advisory committee. I would have to look to Assistant Superintendent Lennox to say, how deep would you want to go into that? And that would be something that Mr. Cheesebrow would have to think about as well. I do know that you here in Bloomington and other districts are thinking of some pretty creative ways to offer recommendation to the board on how you can do an advisory committee. And in this case, when you did your resolution, you directed your management to go ahead and develop the World's Best Workforce Plan and deliver that to you, but the legislation is very clear that the board calls the meeting, the board directs administration on how to conduct the plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now's the time to ask them.
I have one. I know you've worked with us in the past, but I believe that you're currently working with some members of administration.
Yes.
Or is this goal already, right?
Yes. I, from TeamWorks, I'm working with Assistant Superintendent Lennox and with Mr. Melby on some of the pieces related to World's Best Workforce and Integration.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much for coming and presenting, and a little bit later on in this agenda, we'll be picking one of the two proposals, so you're free to stay if you like.
Thank you very much.
All right. Number seven on our Part B agenda is the Next Technologies for Learning Chromebook Launch. And we have two presenters. I'll let you go ahead and introduce yourself to a listening audience.
Thank you. I'm John Weiser, Executive Director of Technology for the district.
And I'm Tim Anderson, Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning for the district.
Thank you, Chair Bergstrom. First time I've been able to say that, so congratulations. Board members, Superintendent Fujitaki, listening public, what Dr. Anderson and I are here tonight to do is to give you some of the, or preview some of the early successes we've had. This is a busy month for us. We're taking a lot of the planning that took place over the last year and a half that we call Next Technologies for Learning, and it's starting to become real for some of our sixth graders. So a week ago today, Valley View sixth graders got Chromebooks. We wanted to talk a little bit about that, give new board members a chance to see that and ask some questions. Just as a review, Next Technologies for Learning has three components, digital content, that is, the movement of curriculum materials and pedagogy to a digital space. It includes the tools and platforms to support that shift. Anytime, anywhere learning is all about access. It's about access to opportunity, that is, our hybrid instruction, our flipped instruction efforts. It's also literal access, access to the internet, when you're at school and also when you're at home. Personalized data, the third element, is about getting the right data to the right people to be, to have educational successes, this week, next week, down the road toward college and career readiness. As a reminder, we put some timestamps on the bottom of this slide. These are presentations we did during this academic year, so if you wanted to do a deep dive on any of these topics, you could go back into the archives and look at presentations on those individual elements. So what happened? A week ago today, these are two smiling faces of Valley View Middle School, 210 students in the sixth grade class got 210 Chromebooks. Pretty great day, interesting day, unique day, it's the fruition of a year and a half worth of work, and Tim and I get to present this, but really, there's a large team behind us, both here in the planning, but also in the execution. All of that work that those teachers have been doing is now theirs, and it's going and rolling into those classrooms. And I was there that morning watching teachers give boot camp to these students for that whole day as they received their Chromebooks and learned about, learned the ins and outs of what to do with them. Behind the scenes, this is what 210 Chromebooks look like when they arrive in boxes. It's a daunting stack. Team of people did a bucket brigade to get those devices ready. Week and a half after they arrived, that bottom right picture is an infrastructure picture. This is our wireless network, and on the morning of February 3rd, you can see the spike. This is when 210 Chromebooks were added to our network, never to look back, and it happened at 9:20 a.m. Taking care of parents and preparing families for this move, what you're looking at there is actually the Olson postcard that went out inviting parents to come to parent nights. I've seen two of those parent nights. Oak Grove Middle School had one of their parent nights this last Thursday. Ben McGrass and Ann Carstens, the media director at Valley View, had a succession of parent nights in preparation for this February 3 rollout. The presentations were great. Parents had the opportunity to ask all kinds of questions. They wanted to ask about what the specifics. At the Oak Grove rollout, there was a table full of students there doing hands-on test drives for parents. It was just fabulous night. There are packets of materials. We have parents in this first rollout to sign off on a packet of materials. It's five or six pages of nuts and bolts, how to take care of your Chromebook when it's at home, what does the move to digital content look like, a closer look at internet access, what kind of access do you have at home and how can we help, three languages that that packet comes in. We have a nicely designed website. If you haven't been on it, I suggest you go look at the NTL website. It has the frequently asked questions portion, answers all of those high-level questions for parents. So the impression I got from those two sessions and from the follow-up, or watching those two schools and the follow-up, was parents and families are well-prepared for this rollout. One of the big issues coming into this process was about internet. So what do you need internet access at home? What does that look like? How are we going to address that issue? We've said all along, we're going to do a menu approach to internet access. Here are some of those menu items. We know a little bit more about internet access every day, so where we were anticipating that 13% of Valley View families were going to be challenged with internet access, what we found on the forms that parents turned in, that it turned out to be 9%. 9% of Valley View families said either we have internet access, but it's not wireless, it's just wired, in which case we have the adapter that's in the lower right there. We added those adapters. They're available to students and families to buy for $7. They're available to students and families to buy for $7 from us. It's an Amazon product, amazon.com product, generic product. So, if you have wired access, you can connect your Chromebook at home. And then, one of the features I'll highlight is in the upper-left corner, which is Everyone On. This is a nonprofit organization whose mission it is to connect the world to the Internet. And we have gone through their process to pre-approve every Bloomington family for low-cost Internet access. That means no matter whether you're Free and Reduced Lunch qualified or not, you can get $10 a month Internet access in Bloomington by going through that specific link and following the process to sign up for a plan. Before I turn it over to Dr. Anderson, I'll tell you a little bit about what students have said. So, one week later, we asked students, "You've had these devices for a week, you've been carrying them home." I've highlighted, there's five responses there. I've highlighted in yellow some things that I'd like to point out. You know, you see, you see the point, you see reflected back some of the things we've talked about, anytime-anywhere access. We can finish our homework at home, or we can finish our work at home. Ease of use. You see some organizational benefits. You see ownership, the transfer of ownership for students. "I can finish my script that I'm making for a film." I don't think that's a school project. I think that's an independent project that we're certainly terrific to help along the path. And lastly, you see, again, the use of Internet and Docs anywhere. And that last comment is saying what we want her to say, or him to say, at certain times, of course. Responsible use.
Thanks, John. Mr. Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, Cabinet, and viewing audience, it's my pleasure to join John tonight. I feel, you know, so fortunate to be a part of a team that works seamlessly in collaboration. You know, I feel that spirit here tonight as this new school board is seated, it's clear. But I'm here to report that's real congruent with the work between academic services and technology. So, I guess I'd say that this effort is certainly about the technology and logistics and data, but primarily, it's about learning and teaching. And so, it's not devices-first. We're so tempted to say, you know, Chromebooks are coming, but that wasn't our motivation at the beginning. It was about learning and teaching. And I'm proud to say that the Technology Office understands this really well, and our partnership is really strong. So, I'm proud to be a part of that. Of course, we're working on all fronts to shift the digital content and the learning environments that that enables. You know, in Bloomington, we've been working now for a while on the shift from "I taught it, it's their job to learn it," to "It's our job to ensure that students are learning." And so, this effort had that framework built into its premise and its structure, and we're helping that come to life now. So, we know that learning starts with good instruction, of course, and here in Bloomington, we've been working hard on that shift, primarily about formative assessment and the data that that generates, and the actionable instructional decisions that can come as a result of that data, and certainly, these tools, Chromebooks, and the digital tools we employ on those Chromebooks help us or enable us to do that. So, Moodle is one of those things. It's a learning management system that organizes our digital content. Google is our suite of tools for allowing collaboration. It's really our office suite in the cloud, if you will. And the hub, of course, is that parent portal that you're familiar with. That's our unified communication system connecting parents, teachers, and students, you know, anything from an upcoming assignment to attendance to discipline. And there are other things that aren't reflected on this slide, like the importance of the student data site that the Research Evaluation and Assessment Office helps support, particularly at elementary. That's something we're keeping alive in the transition, so all teachers have actionable data in making instructional decisions to support student learning. So, we're investing in professional development, of course. That was a big part of our plan. We know that teachers always bring up the notion of time and the constraints that they face. Not enough time to get professional development, not enough time to do lesson planning on days when I'm out getting professional development, so it's a conundrum. Tried to take that into account and come up with a variety of methods and a variety of ways of supporting teachers in this transition. And this will be ongoing. It's not a one-time, you had a little professional development on this one day, but it's meant to be an ongoing support over time, job embedded, and updated based on the data we're getting about how efficacy and results are rolling out. So, we have things like ongoing support of flipped and hybrid cohorts that John mentioned earlier. We have teachers in those cohorts. They get ongoing support for up to three years, if they choose to get it. We have support staff professional development. Friday, the 14th of February, pair of professionals through the excellent organized leadership of Brad Parker in collaboration with Teaching and Learning and Sean Beverson have set up training for Friday of this week related to how they can best support these digital tools. And we, just today, walked past our collaboration sponsored by Office of Educational Equity, Valley View Middle and Olson Middle, teachers getting together using digital tools to collaborate and honor those things Director Melby talked about with integration according to the new Equity and Integration Law statutes. So, of course, there's a number of other things, like you can see on this slide, 25 hours of investment for every sixth-grade teacher. You know, we're trying to take care of professional development to support teachers for high-fidelity implementation of this plan that's ongoing and job embedded. So, what are teachers excited about inside and outside of class? Well, here's an example of inside the class. Erin Griffin Boyle, who has experienced this rollout within the last week, is highlighting some of those things. In this transition to digital resources, we're gonna experience things that are replacement, some things that are amplification, and some things that are transformational. And, you know, you might characterize her testimony here as amplification. She's talking about enabling that formative assessment, immediate access to the world of resources, a more authentic experience, and that's her testimony just from experience, although it's anecdotal in the last week or the first week of implementation. What are teachers excited about outside of class? Here, Kirsten Morecambe is giving a little insight into that. You can see she's talking about the digital divide closing. She's excited about that opportunity with this work. And anytime-anywhere student engagement with content and the things that we're trying to help students learn as a result of their experience with schools. Looking ahead, you could see that Valley View was first, but other sites are next. And final preparations are happening at these schools, and the excitement is building. You can see Normandale Hills, Oak Grove Middle, and Olson Middle. And as a reminder, we have expansion to seventh and eighth grade in the fall of 2014. Of course, any presentation where you invite Teaching and Learning to come and speak with you is a risk to you, Board members, because we might use a Teaching and Learning strategy, like assigning homework. So, let me try that on you. Here's some possible homework, and in this case, because you are my boss's boss, or my boss's boss's boss, collectively, we'll make this voluntary. We'll go easy on you. Here are some things you could choose to do as a part of your homework set. Visit a middle or Normandale Hills this month. Talk to the staff and students about what's happening there, and gather data yourself about the excitement and changes that are just beginning. I think those things are apparent in our brief check-in this evening, and I'm sure you'll find it if you choose to opt in to this homework. Now, I think John made it less optional for you when he said, "Go to the NTL website." That's not my responsibility. He's his own executive director. You know, you guys can work through that. But I invite you to take us up on this optional offer, and I thank you so much for your time. I think we'll have opportunity for questions at this time.
All right, thank you very much for coming. We'll open it up for questions. Director Corman?
Yeah, I'll just ask the question that a student would ask. "Since we have homework, can we get the presentations?" Because I didn't take notes. So, I need to look at the presentation in order to be able to do my homework.
What do you?
Yeah.
Please.
The presentation is with Ms. Ponco.
And I do have questions about that plan protection, John, that you talked about before for the Chromebooks, that insurance, or, you know, in case the Chromebook, it's damaged or broken.
Broken or dropped, yeah.
Yeah, can you tell us a little bit about that?
So, we're using what I'll put in quotation marks as self-insurance. That is, we, in our research, when we went out to other districts and looked at what they were doing, some districts choose to move the responsibility for insurance to parents. They offer insurance policies for parents that they can opt into or not opt into. Other districts do other things. When we looked at the breakage rates, what we found is a 3% to 5% breakage rate these other districts are reporting. There's some variables in there. We use that information to get to a place where we said, "We can self-insure these devices." Makes for a much simpler plan. It makes for a plan that doesn't overburden families. Some of the people who've come before us have a different demographic, who, a community perhaps, that can more afford to buy insurance. 90% of their families can afford to buy insurance. We're not in that situation. We don't want to overcomplicate it, and we can build it in so that it's sustainable.
So, it's self-insured now?
I'm calling it self-insurance. What we've done is we've built into the costing and the set aside some money anticipating to pay for breakage, for loss, for theft, things that we're not gonna be surprised when they happen. One weekend, we have half a dozen repairs for these devices, and we have a way to cover those repairs so that a student can walk into and out of the media center with the device, and the learning doesn't slow down.
Now, those devices have been given to the sixth graders, right? And then, next year, it will be seventh graders and eighth graders. And now, what happens with the eighth grader right now who happens to own a Chromebook right now because they need it? You know, is the district providing any options to the families who got their very own Chromebook for insurance? Are there any insurance options through the district?
Again, there isn't, specifically to your question, no. We're taking a simple approach in this first rollout, and then it will get more nuanced in year two and year three. So, for this first year, we bought 110, or 210 Chromebooks for 210 sixth graders at Valley View, where a student or a family might say, "Hey, can I just bring in my own device, fill in the blank for that device?" Right now, we're saying, "No, be patient. That option will come down the road." So, we're providing a uniform experience. We're trying to take care of teachers as well in this process. When a teacher looks out onto a classroom with the same device, same toolset, same platform, it's an environment more conducive to focusing on other things, change in pedagogy, change in content. If you look out onto a classroom with four kinds of devices and three operating systems and touch and not-touch, it makes for a level of chaos that we weren't willing to risk right in the first rollout. So, those options will come. The "bring your own device" is the general phrase for that situation you're describing. Those will come, they won't come in year one.
Okay. Now, have the seventh and eighth graders been introduced to Chromebooks? Are they working with those in the classroom right now?
Yep, we have about 1,000 Chromebooks in the district, in addition to the ones that are just coming in now for sixth graders. 1,000 are spread across all of our K-12 buildings, plus early childhood in Metro South, our over-18 program. And so, they're experiencing them either on a cart model, like for my class, I wanna do an experience, have an experience where I ask my students to go to the web, so I check out a cart of Chromebooks and they get used for that hour. Or there's some semi-one-on-one happening at our high schools, where that cart of Chromebooks is placed in a math classroom, in Sean Foley's math classroom at Jefferson High School, for instance, and it's there and used every day on a regular basis for the students who come to his class. They're not take-home, but they're available without having to be a special occasion or so on. And so, I would say virtually every student is having exposure and some experience using Chromebooks, as well as teachers and whatever transition it might take. Again, we chose the Chromebook because it's a really easy transition, very, basically a web browser. And very quickly, it gets perhaps a little boring to try to introduce a device that is so familiar to people. Open it up, put in your username and password, you're presented with a web browser, and you go on about your work.
What kind of feedback are you getting from the teachers who are already using the Chromebooks with their students in the classroom?
Good feedback. What we're finding is the Chromebooks are, you know, this is a new device, it's a new type of technology. So, on the technical side, these devices are holding up. They're a year-old, battery life is lasting throughout the day, the durability is there. It's a plastic case. We're used to buying the devices that you have in front of you, which have, you know, quite a bit of durability built into them for added cost. So, from the technical side, they're holding up. I might ask Tim if he's willing to talk about some of the teacher's side, what teachers might be reporting.
Here's a brief anecdote. Teacher at Valley View, language arts teacher, first activity post Chromebooks, wanted the students to be doing a journaling activity, and they had their journals out, their hard copy journals that they'd been using all trimester. So, the instructions were, "Get out your journals, we're gonna do an entry right now." And immediately, kids started raising their hand, saying, "Can we use our Chromebook to do the journal entry?" And the teacher said, "I just didn't expect them to make the transition so quickly, but they made the transition instantly." So, things like that are propping up, and then from the presentation, you're getting a sense of what some staff are saying. So, we'll keep monitoring that because we want formal and informal, you know, feedback to inform our practice as we get ready for the next launches. So, yeah, good.
Yes, Director Aligo?
Couple weeks ago, when we went to the MSBA Leadership Conference, there was a school presenting who had purchased iPads, I think it was, for all their elementary students. They had bought these supercases. They said the only one so far that had been broken that year was by a teacher. And so, the students were actually doing a pretty good job with it. And so, the question that I had is, since they are plastic cases instead of the metal cases, they might be a little bit less durable. Have we looked into, is there a case for them if we find that that ends up being in need, like, you know, if it falls off the desk, it's in pieces, or is it a little bit more stable than that?
So, two things I'll highlight. One is, we have what we would call, we call it the Mark Store. Mark is the guy who runs the, is the tech who runs the tech center, and he has, we've done the research, and we have a roster of parts that are available. So, the parts, we've costed them out, they're available for when breakage happens. Again, not, it is expected. So, we have that prepared. Second thing is, we provide a case for each of these Chromebooks. It's a neoprene blue case. If you look, if you notice in any of the pictures, you see these blue cases everywhere just by happenstance. It's the royal blue, the blue of this slideshow. And so, just by happenstance, when you walk in, you see, you can easily glance down a hall and see cases being carried, not Chromebooks out of their cases, but cases being carried. Our experience with one-to-one in the past was, you reinforce that very simple behavior of when it's in transport, it's in a case, things take care of themselves. So, we're adding, you know, an eight-inch of neoprene. That's as good as you're gonna get from any Snap-on case you'd get for a tablet device. And it's very inexpensive.
I learned the hard way with my kid, what happens when you trip over the power cable, so.
Right, right, exactly.
I won't mention any names. There's only three of them.
Any further questions? I had just a couple, and they were, one of them was answered. I noticed right away in your presentation, the blue on the desk, I assume that's the case that you're talking about. It almost looked like it was a, like a bag to carry it in, or am I not seeing that correctly?
Nope, two little handles, one side pocket. You know, the value of having, our tech project coordinator, Katrina Mesra, came out of the classroom, came from the Oak Grove project coordinator, Katrina Mesra, came out of the classroom, came from the Oak Grove seven-one team that was one of the one-to-one pilot schools four years ago, and so, just as a, as a small benefit, she knew that if you buy a case too big, students tend to overstuff it, they use it for everything, and it becomes unwieldy, and it doesn't serve its purpose. So these are form-fitting cases with a handle, one small pocket to store the power supply, nothing else. Slip that together inside of a backpack, so you get two layers of protection, we think that's going to hold up really well.
Thank you. Next question was, the everyoneon.org, does that have, is it high-speed, does it have fast enough connectivity for the use that the students are going to be requiring of the internet?
It's going to send, it's going to send all Bloomington residents to one of three options, and depending on the information you give it, it's three or four or five questions. And you can go just try, you can click through in the four minutes that it takes to go through the questions, to figure out what offer it gives you. One of those options is going to be the Comcast Internet Essentials option, which is cable, a hardwareed cable to your house, that is, the same high-speed internet that you would get if you, if you signed up for Comcast cable. That one, you may, depending on how you answer the questions, you may have to be free and reduced lunch qualified, and they have some, you know, parameters around the speed of that internet. The other two options are using cell phone towers, so, and, and they provide a variety, so you see a range there from zero to ten dollars. Zero is, the zero option, zero-dollar option, is, it's enough to get by, but it's not, it's cellphone data plan in size, so it's a very modest amount, but it's something. Going up to the ten-dollar option, which is unlimited, over the air, but it's probably not at the highest speed rate that you might get over a wire. So, very adequate, and of the, you'll get typically two out of the three when we've gone through and tried the different combinations of inputs.
My last particular question was, we have a sixth grade and an eighth grade son right here in Oak Grove, and our sixth grader is, is marking X's on the calendar when, when he's going to get his Chromebook in his hands, and I was otherwise occupied last Thursday when it was parent information night, and so I'm curious-
You're getting it here.
Well, I'm curious to know if, if you know maybe what was the most frequently asked question from that parent information night? I know you have FAQs on the, online, but when the, when moms and dads and grandpas and grandmas and caregivers come out and look at it and touch it, and do you, can you recall just offhand, what was the?
Well, the questions, so the slideshow that we've, that we start with at the, at the schools is meant to take the, those eighty percent of questions out of the audience's minds. We start with frequent things, like, what is my obligation in terms of cost if my son or daughter breaks it, or drops it, or loses it? So we take those things off. What about, what are the questions around internet access? We take those off the table by pre-answering them. So the questions that were coming out of the audience were things like, what are we doing for families who don't speak English? That was one of those that came, that came up twice. A Somali teenager speaking on behalf of her family and her extended family, how are we bridging that gap, the language barrier gap? And then with the students, I would say the thing that stuck out was the hands-on, just give me a quick tour, I know you've described it for me, but I want to see hands-on, what do you do in class every day with this thing? And so, these students were showing the, the parents in front of them how they were navigating to their Moodle pages, their teacher's Moodle pages where the assignment, the digital classroom where assignments and lessons are presented, and to Google Docs where the production happens, production of word processing and spreadsheets and presentations, and, you know, this spreadsheet, or this presentation is a Google Doc, it's a Google presentation. So those are the two things that stood out as I saw parents approach students and ask questions.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much. Yeah, Director Bennett.
Is there a point at which we would cut students off when there's excessive breakage or loss, losing their, their Chromebook, and it's like the third time, fourth time, fifth time? Is there a point that we've specified?
Yeah, so, we're, we're not in the habit of handing that sort of individual situation down from the, from the central office, so we give some loose-tight guidelines where we want the schools to be uniform, so that you get the same, a similar experience if you go to Valley View than you would if you went to Oak Grove, or if you went to Olson. The parameters are basically sort of a one-strike, two-strike, three-strikes, and it all is premised on accidental problems, so accidental breakage, accidental loss. Intentional goes into a whole nother realm of, of, you know, consequences that probably don't have as much to do with the device as they have to do with the relationship between the school and the student. So I, so in summary, it's sort of like a zero percent for strike, or zero-dollar cost for strike one, twenty-five-dollar cost for strike two, fifty-dollar cost for strike three. If the, if the device is stolen, and the family fills out a police report, there's no cost for that, it's an unanticipated expense.
And the majority of-
And there's lots of parallels to existing systems that we have, so none of this is new, really. We give students eighty-dollar textbooks, we give them three or four or five of them, and they're carrying around with them three hundred dollars worth of curriculum content materials, and they know that if they leave it in a snowstorm, or drop it in the pool, or leave it at a friend's house, there's natural consequences that come with that, where, you know, take responsibility for your learning and the tools that you need.
So, another question was, the majority of these problems, like if they are, there's some damage to the devices, can they be fixed in our district, or were you outsourcing them, or?
The majority are fixed in district. So, fourteen dollars to replace what we call the bottom case, or the top case. If it turns out to be a warranty issue, we send those out, that is, screen is dead for some unexpected manufacturing problem. Those we send out because they go back to the, they go back through the warranty process, but almost everything that's accidental dropage isn't covered under warranty, so we buy the fourteen-dollar part, or the thirty-eight-dollar screen, or part, and replace it on-site. And they're incredibly easy to replace, four screws gets you to most of the parts.
Okay, so all of our sixth graders at Valley View have them this year, so I'm assuming next year, those same sixth graders will be, seventh graders will also have them next year as well?
Correct.
And they'll just keep them until they need to be replaced?
Yep, ownership model, so if you, when you get a Chromebook in your sixth-grade year, it stays with you until you go, leave that school. Eighth graders, the Chromebook stays with you, or stays with the school, so when you go to ninth grade, you get a different device, and incoming sixth graders would get that Chromebook. But the idea is, if you take it in for a repair, you get a loaner, and then when it comes back from repair in six days, you get yours back. Take care of it, and it'll serve you well.
So they keep it over the summers, then?
No intention to keep it over the summer yet, unless there's a learning objective.
Okay.
And we're very open to that idea for students who can take advantage of additional learning over the summer. It seems to make total sense, and it'd be silly to lock everything up if there's learning that can take place.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you guys very much for coming and updating us.
It's better than a written report, isn't it?
It is. I know our sons are excited. All right, now, the next item on our agenda is our second consultant presentation from Vox Libre. Am I pronouncing that right?
Oh, no.
All right, you're welcome to correct me. We have Craig Vandal presenting this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to spend some time with you this evening. Vox Libre is, is the pronunciation, it harkens back to actually seminary days from my, my undergraduate school, and thought perhaps I might seek a pulpit someday. Instead, I sought the pulpit of the superintendency where I spent twenty years. In the last four years of so-called retirement, I've been engaged in, in a sole proprietorship called Vox Libre, which stands for A Voice for Children. And as a, as a part of that, I have spent time doing the kind of work that Superintendent Fujitaki has asked me to explore with you this evening. My primary book of business as a sole proprietor, as a one-person operation, has been in long-range and strategic planning. I thought perhaps I might get away from the, the twice-monthly school board meetings, and instead, I've traded them for twice-in-evening school board meetings, because I just, just left the Robinsdale School District, where we wrapped up a strategic planning process as we put the unified district vision together over this past year. The other area of, of my business has been in superintendent search, and in project planning as well. Director Olivia, I, I heard you say that you saw a presentation at MSBA on a school district in these indestructible cases, I believe it was the Sartell School District, because the Sartell School Board hired me to help them with their superintendent search, and just last week, I was talking to a school board member about how she was at MSBA making a presentation on their technology, and she showed me this indestructible case, which you probably could have thrown against a wall, and it would have survived. I'm interested in, in, in working with you from, from a lot of perspectives, but I need to suggest to you that what you've asked a facilitator, what you've asked a trainer to do, is, is a bit difficult to accomplish in a three and a three-and-a-half-hour prospect. I need to suggest to you, there are some delimitations. I am not a contact expert on world's best workforce, and I made that very clear to, to Dr. Fujitaki when he asked me about that. I am a process person, as opposed to a content person, as I would approach your Saturday morning retreat. I have done relationship retreats for the MSBA, through the MSBA, and for many MSBA school districts. I have done content workshops for many school districts in the metro area and the rural areas on such topics as principal evaluation, school board relationships, and teacher evaluation, recent, recent examples. I have not done a workshop, nor would I choose to take a book of business, on world's best workforce per se. What I can do, and have done for many school districts across the state, is engage in strategic conversations intended to both develop the relationship elements of boards, and also to help pull from the content experts in the room, and I know you have content experts, I've read your PowerPoint presentation longer than the, the school board associations, longer than MDEs, very detailed, and can lead you into a process of discernment regarding the finer elements of world's best workforce. I'm conversant in your strategic plan, in part because we looked at the strategic plan for Bloomington as we began the work on the Robinsdale strategic plan, and as I was reviewing my folder this evening for Robinsdale, came across that document once again. In the three-and-a-half-hour session, I would see, well, you've got three different elements that you'd like to address, that this becomes a concurrent discussion. A discussion that helps you first discern how the world's best workforce best fits into your strategic plan, a discussion in terms of how you develop a set of goals regarding world's best workforce that are also in alignment with your strategic plan, and as a concurrent activity, discussing how best you establish the kind of working relationship, as I understand it, you're a new board, a working relationship both between and among yourselves as board members, and also between and among yourselves as an administrative team. I did not mention a book of business that I do have, and that is, working with boards on policy governance. My work on policy governance has been with both private, nonprofit, and with public-sector groups. I was working with a church council in Mata Bide two months ago on policy governance. I've worked with Lutheran Social Service on policy governance, and also worked with several different school boards, mostly in the rural area, on policy governance issues. Typically, my policy governance work happens as a part of a board orientation. Wrapping those three elements together, what I would see spending time with you on Saturday morning is, is leading you through affinity exercises specifically directed at, at the, the goal-setting around world's best workforce, but as that goal-setting process emerges, is working with you on the appropriate policy governance roles of Dr. Fujitaki's office as a superintendent of schools, and your role as, as a board of education along the way. I need to suggest that you have been working with a fine firm, T-Works is an, is an excellent, is an excellent entity, and I don't wish to try to suggest that the, my entree into this marketplace is in any fashion akin to that. As a person who has run his own shop, so to speak, for four years, I haven't gone out and marketed myself, I, I don't often sit for a board and try to sell a, a set of services. Most often, what happens is, my best marketing is, is customers who have, have heard from other customers that I do good work, and, and they approach me, and essentially, that's how this happened this evening. Had I not been in, in Robinsdale, had I not known Dr. Fujitaki for a lot of time, for a long time, I may not have responded to an RFP. I am familiar with your school district, in part because I have a couple of nephews that graduated from here from the last, within the last ten years, and in, in large part because it's of my association with some of the folks within your organization. But I don't have marketing materials to lay before you, I do have an extensive resume of successful and satisfied clients over the course of time, and would be happy to share that with you along the way. I'm assuming you've seen my financial proposal, and that has been shared with you. I do have annotated copies of that proposal, if you're interested in that, but more than anything, what I'd like to do is, is respond to any questions that you might have, and suggest to you that, based on the experience that I've had as superintendent of schools, and over the last four years, as a, as a person who has worked with many, many different school systems, I would deliver what it is that you see.
Thank you so much for coming, I'll open it up for questions. I know we've all had a, a moment to take a, take a look through here, and, and it seems fairly comprehensive. I'm, I just, I'm not seeing a lot of questions here, so I'm going to ask one. I have just one question on, on your financial proposal. I'm looking at additional meetings, such as are requested by the district, shall be contracted with the proposer at a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and a hundred dollars an hour for travel time. I apologize for not looking at your, oh, there we go, sock rapid.
My address, yes, St. Cloud area.
Okay, St. Cloud. I, I didn't Google it to see how many miles away, you come down ninety-four on a good day, you're looking at an hour and a half.
Hour and a half, on a good day, yes.
Okay.
On a Saturday, that would typically be a good day.
Okay, but with no snow, and?
And if you can guarantee me that, then I would like to invite you to, to help the superintendents of Minnesota with school closing decisions, so.
We have to talk to our superintendent, he guarantees good weather for our heritage days in, in September, so.
Yes. The, the additional services, as I talked to Dr. Fujitaki about the scope of services, what you're looking for is a project that, that has a relatively defined hourly scope, though as I've suggested, you, you've got a lot on that agenda that you'd like to accomplish. As I, as I, my business plan calls for, for an examination and hour analysis, just like anybody else would, and so I say to myself, here's how much time I think I have invested into this, but I need to make certain I would cover additional expectations that you might have, breakout sessions that you might wish to call, additional meetings that you might wish to engage as a part of a planning process.
Sure, sure, well, that's only, that's only fair. Yes, Director Corman.
Yeah, I'm just curious, could you tell us a little bit about your experience working with other boards and the development of parent and community engagement opportunities? I know I'm always talking about that stuff, so, sorry, but-
Certainly. If you're talking about parent and community engagement opportunities, that is the niche in the marketplace that, that I think I fill. I am not technically a strategic planner, though I have to suggest that, that I did have an opportunity to, to study and, and then meet with Dr. Bill Cook, who is one of the preeminent strategic planners in the nation. He, he offered me the opportunity to work, and I examined the, the number of times I would be away from Minnesota and decided I would look a different direction. I've, I use a community engagement design that really, I, I- I use a community engagement design that really, I describe it as I just did with the Robinsdale Board in a work session, as kind of like a Shackley approach, which means that in terms of marketing, Shackley uses pyramids where small groups of individuals interact with larger groups of individuals. In Robinsdale, we developed a steering committee of a dozen persons, internal and external stakeholders. Those dozen persons helped steer a planning process. We identified another 40, 45 persons from the broader community, mostly external stakeholders, that we thought were as broadly representative of the community as is possible, and we engaged in some pretty sophisticated sociological work to try to make certain that those invited to that core planning team were in fact representative of all of the demographics of that district. We engaged in some planning processes with those 40 plus 12, the steering committee, plus the core planning team, to identify what that group considered to be the most critical issues facing the school district. Then each of the members of the steering committee and the core planning team went out and engaged in intentional conversations. Their charge was a dozen persons each over a course of about two months. Concurrent with that activity, we took those core issues, and we devised a district survey. And so we were engaging in intentional conversations with the community, and we were surveying community members that weren't able to be engaged in conversation. The core planning team and the steering committee got back together again and said, here's what we sought in terms of information, here's what we heard, these are the findings. The findings drove the development of the school district goals and ultimately became the unified district vision. It was all about engagement, but engagement happens at that most human level. I know you just had a wonderful presentation on technology, and technology can help facilitate that, but engagement involves an interaction, person to person, and supplemented by the use of the other technologies over the course of time. So that was my experience with Robinsdale. I'm replicating that right now with the Buffalo School District. I just started the same project with the Shasago Lake School District and with the SOC Center School District. In the last several years, I've had six or seven different community engagement projects going, typically two or three at a time.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right, thank you so very much for coming this evening.
I am, fortunately, am not going to be able to stay as you make your deliberations. I understand that Dr. Fujitaki will be reporting at a later date, but I do thank you for the opportunity to come and sit with you, and I wish you the best as you take the next steps forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we move to the last item on our Part B agenda this evening, is the approval of a consultant. We've listened to two presentations, and I would entertain conversation and/or a motion to approve either. Director Oliva?
So with TeamWorks, is it my understanding they help create the strategic plan that we currently have, and they're also working with us in some capacity now?
That is correct.
From my perspective, sometimes when you're trying to look at two different things, it's sort of like when my mom was looking at an iPhone versus an Android phone, I said, well, you already use iTunes, and you already use this, and you already have this, and you already have all the songs in there, so sometimes it's, if you don't know which one's going to be better, sometimes it's better to go with one that you think's going to be easier. And so it seems like, in this case, the TeamWorks proposal, they both look like they're definitely qualified and will be good, and do similar things even looking at the agendas that they propose and the costs that they propose. It's virtually identical. It seems like if TeamWorks is the one that we've been using, they help with the plan that we have now, that if we are having a hard time determining, if one isn't obviously better than the other, then the one that seems easier would be the best way to go for now, unless we, until we determine that it actually isn't working. So that's sort of where I'm sitting at right now. I don't know how you all feel.
Okay. Fair, makes sense. Anyone have any...
How much of this retreat is going to be centered around the world's best workforce?
Well, the majority of it, yeah. I mean, we need to make sure that we're, what we're asking the district to do fits in line with what the world's best workforce is asking us to do.
Obviously, it looks like they're both very good organizations that have experience working with other school districts. I really like the community engagement, the community, the parent and community engagement approach that, please help me out, Vox?
Vox Libre.
Vox Libre?
Libre. I wrote it out phonetically.
That is being presented by AM. This is a huge blue piece in this world's, okay, WBW. I'm going to decide to go without one.
We can use another acronym.
Yes. You know, obviously, TeamWorks has looked at it as well, but I think we might, we can also ask Vox Libre to help us with this. I don't think it's so, you know, difficult to look at it. I mean, I've seen the bill, I've seen what's stated in there, and any organization that has been working with school districts and policies and all that can develop a plan that can work for us as well. I like the second presentation.
Okay.
I like them both, of course. I'm just leaning towards the second one, that's all I can say.
Okay. Yes, Director Baralata?
I agree, they're both good presentations. One thing he did say was that he's not that familiar with world's best workforce, and since that's what we're really going for, I really think that, you know, we should go to the one that has more knowledge about the thing we need to talk about, and so that leads me to lean towards TeamWorks.
Okay. Director Bennett?
As Director Corman was stating, the community engagement aspect, I thought was really good of the second presentation, but I don't think that's really going to be part of this, what we're hiring for, so I don't know if we should even be looking at that, unless we want to look at maybe hiring him for something other than just this workshop.
Okay.
They were both great presentations, and this is a hard decision, because...
I know.
I think we would do great with either one of them. I think they would meet our needs.
Especially when we have to pretend like they can't hear us talking about them.
Oh, they can hear us?
And they're sitting right in front of us now.
Along with that, on the community engagement, that really wasn't a question asked to her, so she did not get to present how they would do community engagement, so I don't know the difference.
Yeah, no, you're right. That was a question that was asked of only one presenter. So, of course, hindsight being what it is, we could invite you back up to answer that question, but I'm fairly certain you know what we're looking for.
Right. No.
I think we can, I think we can get it done.
Yeah, well, you know, the approach of the agenda as well, not only the community engagement part, of course, but what is said in the agenda is also, I like this format. It looks like there's less in there, and then you might have more time to talk about board goals in working with superintendent and superintendent's goals.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the input. I think what, does anyone have anything else before we look for a motion to approve one or the other? Okay, do we have a motion? Does anyone care to read this?
Can you copy the resolution?
There was a resolution that came with either one. Director Baralata?
Mr. Chair, may I resolve that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a consulting services agreement with TeamWorks International to facilitate the school board retreat to be held Saturday, February 15th, 2014.
Second. All right, that resolution was moved and seconded. So now we go for a vote. All those in favor of the TeamWorks resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Me.
Okay.
So now we'll go around the table, if I may, and this particular time, I'll start with
Director Oliva. Just please signify your intent for the, I'm sorry, the TeamWorks.
Aye.
Director Corman?
No.
I vote aye.
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 Okay, I have it as 5-1. Okay. All right. So we will, we will look forward to seeing TeamWorks this coming Saturday. It'll be in this room at 8:30. That's when the gavel will hit the puck. I think that's what you call this thing, the puck, and so you're welcome to come a few minutes early and, great, or, yes, Dennis will be here. Okay, now we move on to board member reports, and this is an opportunity for the board members to just sort of fill us in on what they've been doing since our last meeting. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to share?
Ladies first.
All right, Director Baralata?
I only have two things. I attended the League of Women Voters Gathering that was about a week and a half ago. They gave their report for their annual report, I guess you'd call it, and it was a nice event. I also attended the Bloomington United for Youth recognition ceremony, where they award individual youth, individual adults, and then groups of youth and groups of adults their annual recognition, and unfortunately, I didn't bring the list of all the people that were recognized that night, but it was a nice event, an annual event that they hold.
Okay. Thank you. Director Oliva?
This past Friday, I attended the AMSD Legislative Preview, and they had some good presenters. One that caught my attention was, I believe it was Farmington, where he talked about empowering the teachers to teach, not be so prescriptive in what the teachers are doing, and letting them teach to their best abilities and let them run the classroom sort of how they see to be best, and I really appreciated that, especially coming from a teaching background.
Great, thank you. Anyone, yes, Director Skye Steigoff, sorry.
I just wanted to note to the other board members that when you looked at the membership list for the Special Education Community Advisory Council, you saw me listed as chair. That is because I was the past chair, and we had not found anyone to step into that role, and I'm happy to say we, Mr. Melby and I worked on that, and we do have a parent that's willing to step up into that position, but we have to wait till the next meeting to actually vote that person, and so then I will not be listed as chair. And I also wanted to say that I attended the Early Childhood Parent Advisory Dance at Pond Friday night, and, you know, you just can't get much cuter than those kids out there dancing, and the DJ was out on the floor with the kids. It was really very cute. Well-attended, a lot of fun.
Those events are always a lot of fun. Anyone, yes?
Yes, last Wednesday, I was able to attend the PTSA Council meeting, and we had it over at the Bloomington Theater and Arts Center, and for those of us that showed up early, we were able to get an exclusive behind-the-scenes backstage tour, which was really cool. I've never been backstage there before, and they're currently showing the, was it Putnam 25th Annual Spelling?
Spelling Bee.
Which is hilarious, if you haven't seen it. It's not really appropriate for children, so make it a date night. And we were also able to get a preview of all the summer events, which was probably the best part of the meeting, because we get to, there's so many great activities that keep our kids engaged throughout the summer, and we have Summer Spectrum in the works and the art center, and I leaned over to a friend of mine and said, it's going to be an expensive summer, because there's so many things I want my kids to do. And then also on Friday, I also went to the Family Center for the dance, and they had the Hop-A-Thon, which they added to help raise funds, and they had me be the official hop counter. And those little three- and four-year-olds can hop faster than I can count. You know, 100 hops in 30 seconds is hard to count.
You've got to get one of those little hand clippers.
Yeah, so that was a lot of fun, and the DJ was great. He was out there teaching the kids Gangnam Style and doing the "What is a Foxy?" a couple times, and, yeah, my kids loved it, so it was a lot of fun.
Oh, that's wonderful. I had an opportunity to attend the District 917 Board Meeting, which was the reason that I wasn't at the Bloomington United for Youth event. Also was with Tom at the PTSA Council Meeting. I just would like to make, say another thank you to all of our PTSA reps, to all of our volunteers in the community, and I know that our school and our district absolutely would not be what it is without all our volunteers. So thank you to all the parents, moms, and dads, uncles, aunts, grandpas, grandmas, whomever you are, you know who you are. Also want to take advantage of this opportunity to say that we do have four, five, six, maybe, tickets left for our pancake breakfast coming up on, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, and that's going to be at Applebee's from 8:00 in the morning until 10:00. Your board, plus Jim Sorum, will be there to meet you, to greet you, and to seat you, and if I play nice, maybe they'll let me pour some water or juice. I think they'll keep the hot beverages away from me. So that concludes my particular reports.
I do have a reporter.
Yes.
So I attended, on February 6th, attended the District Diversity Advisory Committee, and Eric Melby, Executive Director of Student Services, had the opportunity to talk about the world's best workforce and, as well as the integration plan, the new integration plan. I also attended the Bloomington Youth Event, and it was very, very nice to be there and great to see all these people being recognized, and a great job that all volunteers are doing, and the kids from our schools are doing. Then, of course, the celebration of Arlene Bush for 32 years of service. I had the opportunity to ask Arlene if me sitting down now at her chair means that I have to be here for 32 years as well. So she responded, good luck. And then I also attended the...